Next, Asa.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. All in favor? Motion path is nine zero. Is there a fair TV on? Hope. Right, I am calling to order the regular day Tuesday, June twenty-third, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order.
Wow, I'm right on time.
I ask everyone to please mute your phones or your, um, your computer audio. The public is joining us tonight by WebEx. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge. Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I apologize to the public. We were in executive session prior to this. Um, let me call the roll. I'm going to ask some members just to, um, stay here just because I, for WebEx, I have a lot of people in front of me. Mr. Otelli?
Here.
Ms. Lieber? Mrs. Gerber?
Here.
Mr. Asa? He's here. I see he's here. Ms. Tico?
Here.
This is next to me.
Here.
Ms. Jacobson?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Yeah.
And I am the jerk, Ms. Otelli, and I am here, but barely. Um, we are joined tonight by Superintendent Cummings as well as our executive director. Thank you all for being here. Happy summer. Um, I hope everyone has enjoyed the last few days, um, your school being out. Happy Father's Day, belated to all the dads out there. Uh, and let's get to business. I apologize for the late start. Public comment. The public is invited to give comment to, um, the board, the, uh, the public comment form on the Board of Education website, as well as the email, publiccomment@fairfieldpublics.com, fairfieldschools.org. Public comment will be verified and then included with the meeting minutes. And again, public comment is on agenda items only. We are joined tonight, uh, for, by our athletic directors, the two high schools, Mr. Frye and Mr. Cornet, who will be giving us an update on school athletics. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you wanted to give an introduction or if we should bring it right to the A.D.s.
Yeah, let me do it. Just thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a really brief introduction. I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Cornet and Mr. Frye were able to join us tonight and speak to the, um, the guidelines that have been issued by C I A.C. Uh, C I A.C. calls these guidelines the re-socialization of inter-schoolastic athletics and activities programs, uh, and guidelines. And I would say to you that, just like we've discussed with even issues related to the reopening of the school, so much of what the C I A.C. intends to do is predicated on, uh, the right health numbers, as the governor has frequently spoken. Um, the health numbers are going in the right direction, then C I A.C. is able to implement the plan in its stages and phases as it's intended. So, I've been asking them to speak about, uh, where we are and where we're going to go, as well as if they would address some of the concerns that they have as we go forward, and we can possibly have some board discussion about those. So, gentlemen, thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Cornet, Mr. Frye, I don't know which one of you wants to start or if you're going to add to him.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I'll start off, but we're gonna attack him in a little bit. Um, so basically, there's four phases of the, of this plan to get back into full play eventually in the fall. And the first phase we're currently in, and we've been in since June first, and that's basically just virtual, um, coaching, which many of our coaches have been doing, giving the kids, um, an opportunity to do some conditioning activities. Um, but that, and that's all virtually. None of the facilities are open for them at this point. The second phase is, has an anticipated start date of July sixth, and that's when outdoor facilities would be open. Uh, and that's, again, that's just a guideline for the C I A.C. The, we also, each individual district also needs permission, obviously, and a plan in place for that to occur. Um, with that July sixth date, um, the recommendation that that coaches are allowed to work with student athletes and cohorts, cohorts between five and ten people. And those groups have to remain, you know, in the same cohort every time they, they work out together. And it's recommended that they only, uh, go three days a week for a maximum of an hour per session. And each, um, workout or time would have to be outdoors. They're not allowed to share any equipment. They have to keep masks on as much as possible, essentially when they're waiting in line to do their activity or any time they're not doing an aerobic or a HIIT. Sorry. Sorry about that. That's Mia. Or anaerobic activity they have to do on, but they can take it off for the athletes. Um, and then, uh, they also have to bring their own water bottles. And there has to be a, a way of tracking how the kids, who's there, and they have to provide a self-inventory. And the C I A.C. has provided a, a guideline to the questionnaire that they should fill out as far as, you know, COVID-19 question, how they've been exposed, do they feel any symptoms, you know, along those lines. Uh, so that's phase two. Phase three, if everything went well, we've gone on third. And with that, the number of outdoor participants increases, then they would also, uh, open indoor activities as well in small numbers. And basically, all the other guidelines remain pretty much the same at that point. Um, the final stage, the anticipated date is August thirty-first. And at that point, pretty much everything is back to normal, hopefully. Um, if there's any, you know, specific questions about that, we'd be happy to, to answer them, but that's pretty much the overall guidelines that they've, that they've given us.
Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Malli, Miss Gerber.
Um, just one quick question regarding the, the dates and coaches working with players. So, does that mean that C I A.C. is, um, amending their rules regarding the legal start to a season? Or, you know, or is this akin to small co-, uh, captains' practice, but only with coaches? I don't quite understand the nature of what the C I A.C. is allowing.
They've amended some of the rules, but coaches have always been allowed to do conditioning with their kids in the offseason. The only difference with this aspect of it is that they can incorporate some skill work into their conditioning.
Okay. And how would that impact incoming freshmen?
Uh, they would be allowed to participate as well.
I know. So much for my having only one question. Um, is there an outreach plan? I mean, how, how would ninth graders be made aware of this opportunity?
So, if, if we are able to go forward with this and have, um, a plan in place, we would post and try to get the word out as best as we can to incoming ninth graders, um, through social media and our websites. And, you know, other various ways if, if we have ability to do that.
We, we already have, some parents have been reaching out, so as we've been responding to, but a lot of it has still been, kind of, we see. We haven't had great answers. A lot of it's just been around, uh, registering for fall sports. Um, and then, you know, once, once they're registered, which we, you know, encourage everyone to do, then their, uh, the coach of that program has their email and works with, uh, you know, booster clubs. That's about, you know, one of the ways they disseminate information, um, you know, to get word out about whatever activities are coming up. So, uh, that part's, you know, pretty much remaining the same. Um, unfortunately, with not having school, you know, typically Todd and I go into the middle schools and, you know, talk to the eighth graders about fall sports, um, because fall sports start before school does. And we, we talk about, you know, registering and having, um, schedules on file and so forth. So, we've been, you know, we tweeted out that, that type of information. Um, we have things posted on the athletic page at, at each school, uh, that reflects all that information as well. So, um, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can with that word.
One of the other parts is that this is, um, all voluntary. So, kids don't have to participate. Coaches don't want to, don't have to do it if they don't want to. It's completely out of bounds for a basis.
Thank you.
And since the C I A.C., um, does not believe in captain's practice, neither do we. Uh, they, we cannot put, um, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old student athletes, um, in charge of a bunch of other student athletes with the same expectations that we have for the coaches in terms of awareness about, you know, concussion and heat, you know, exhaustion and things like that. So, we always tell students all the time that there are no captain's practices. And the more that that word can be spread, the better off we'll, we'll speak. So, happy to have that on Fair TV right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Gerber?
Uh, yeah, I had a question, um, just because I'm a big fan of volleyball, and volleyball is the one indoor fall sport. And there's an awful lot of contact. Has, have there been any guidelines as to how that's going to be working, um, in the upcoming season?
In, in the second phase, with, with such, like, six, they would be allowed to do conditioning outdoors. Um, starting on the second phase of August third, they could potentially go indoors, but they wouldn't be allowed to use their regular nets and equipment anyway, because they're only allowed to do skill work based on, you know, as part of a conditioning exercise. So, it would be hard to argue, you know, you're practicing serving or buffing or setting over a net, um, you know, as part of conditioning. Um, so, some, some sports, based on these guidelines, it does seem that some sports may benefit a little bit more than others. And since volleyball isn't indoor sport, that might be one of the cases, but they can certainly get together, according to this, on July sixth, and do, you know, everything as any other team would do for conditioning purposes outside.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other board member have questions? Ms. Jacobson?
Um, thank you for giving us the update. I appreciate it. Um, I just, backtracking a little bit to the registration and coaches reaching out. So, just so we're all clear, all coaches at this point have access to everyone who's registered so far. Yes? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, just as A.D.s, um, I know you said it's voluntary for coaches or voluntary for players, which I totally understand. Um, but do you, as A.D.s, have any expectations at least in some, some sort of communication with them during this time, knowing they've been out for so many months, or just to make sure that they're well-prepared for the fall? Or is it just completely, if they want to, they can, or if they don't want to? Because I could see that being, well, maybe some does a lot, maybe some does none. I was just wondering if either of you have any type of standard expectation at this point?
Well...
Did we lose them?
You heard them.
I can't hear them.
So, uh, as far as, you know, required to do something, I don't really do that under contract. It's not in career. Um, you know, being in the league that we're in and having the, the professional coaches that we do, um, or coaches that have a professional message, um, you know, that it's pretty consistent that the coaches are involved. I know a lot of the coaches, um, saying in the summer, kind of virtually, are they, uh, you know, you would assign things, things like that, uh, not to add anything personally, anyway. Um, so with, with some of the teams, they really won't be too much the same. Um, I think the bigger thing is other teams that use the, the, or these schools, um, on a regular basis, they're not going to be allowed to be inside. They're going to need to be more creative in finding ways to do that kind of conditioning, um, at least until August third. Uh, but with the season only a couple weeks after that, they're just going to wait until August third, you know, lifting it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Otelli, were you calling on me?
Sorry, I muted myself because of the problem. I was calling on you.
Um, I did want to follow up with a couple more. I wasn't sure if you guys had more to say, or if this was then just questions for us. But, um, one thing that was just said that I hope gets reiterated loud and clear for the athletes, um, is the understanding that these workouts are, of course, optional, but also that they are no guarantee, you know, these are not the tryouts. There is no guarantee of getting placement on a team due to participation in these. I think that's something that's going to need to be very explicit, um, because if it's not, it will get asked. Um, and I was wondering, I assume there's no change in the physicals in terms of the expectation of those being completed by a deadline?
Uh, that is correct. Um, the physicals that are good for thirteen months, you know, a lot of the, you know, we've been having meetings every Friday with several of the athletic directors and members of the C I A.C. since we have been in this situation. And there was a lot of comment about that, because it's difficult for people to get appointments with everything that's going on. But as the latest guidelines say on here, they have not, you know, changed that requirement to this point. Um, so it may be more of a challenge, but it's still the expectation that no one can participate, um, you know, once the, the season starts without, uh, having a valid physical on file with the school nurse. Uh, in terms of the, it being, you know, voluntary and not having to do with whether they make the team or not, again, that's consistent, um, with all years. Uh, we will, we will work with the coaches to be even more, uh, direct about getting that message out, where that there are a lot of families, you know, the student athletes and/or their families, uh, their level of comfort with this situation may vary quite a bit. Uh, and there are, you know, people that may not feel comfortable yet participating, e- even in the small groups. Um, and we want to be sensitive to that. There are plenty of people that are chomping at the bit as well, and then they want to get out there and get together. Um, so we're going to do our best to, you know, uh, follow the guidelines at the C I A.C. and then whatever else that the town asks us, um, to adhere to that.
And so then, just, uh, two other follow-up questions. Do you have any sense yet of how many coaches are going to be willing to do, how many sports are going to be represented by this? In terms of in Fairfield? Any sense of that yet?
Well, it seems that all of the...
Mr. Cornet, I can't hear you.
All of the fall coaches are interested in doing something. I should say, I should say, most of the fall coaches are interested in doing something, whether it may be, you know, three days a week in the maximum with all kids, or just sending out workouts or meeting once a week. You know, there's various levels, but they are interested in that.
Great. Um, and then, just as a follow-up, right now, you said August thirty-first is considered to be when it's going to be regular. Is that, yeah, obviously, knowing the things can change, but that's the idea right now?
Um, there's still some, I'm reading through the guidelines right now. There's still some, some guidelines in place at that point. Um, but for the most part, it's back to how we, we're used to seeing plus.
Okay.
You know, they're still suggesting, you know, we have hand sanitizer available for, for use, um, and to social distance if possible. But at that point, there's, they've really taken a lot of the restrictions off.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, couple follow-ups. The, looking at the schedules that are posted for tryouts in the fall, some of, they start before August thirty-first? So, do those tryout schedules conflict with the August thirty-first, or do those tryout schedules fall in the phase three?
Those tryout schedules would have to be done, um, in accordance with phase three, which most of them can be done in that way.
Okay. Okay. And then, last but not least, I know this might be a different topic once we get more reopening stuff, um, but the transportation issue. Do you have any updates on transportation, if we're going to be limited to county or regional, or any of that kind of information at this point?
Um, the first phases suggest that you stay within town or within local region. And then, after that, they pretty much say to be announced at this point. So, we'll, they're going to determine that as time goes on. But again, these are just guidelines by the C I A.C. These aren't actual, you know, rules from them. They, they made it clear that, the distinction between the two. So, it's really on the local district to decide what's best for us.
Okay.
One of the things that we've...
We're losing you.
The whole computer. I have confidence in it. One of the things that we've discussed in our weekly meetings with our league is, um, keeping the sub-VARSE schedule more local than the VARSSE schedule, uh, in case we have restrictive busing guidelines. One of the things that we are exploring is possibly doing Damboree-type things on Saturdays to limit the travel during the week, uh, because we're concerned about availability of buses, um, given, you know, we might have to, you know, spread things out a little bit more. So, we're looking at those things, but we, you know, as a league, we haven't committed to those things yet. And again, as Todd just mentioned, because each town needs to approve things, it's, you know, we can't just make, okay, this is what our league is going to do. You know, each town has to say it's o- it's okay with them. So, um, we're hopeful that as things continue to progress the way they have been in Connecticut, um, as the C I A.C. has mentioned, we should be able to open up and, and continue, um, with the dates that they have put out right now. So, hopefully, we will be more or less normal in the fall.
Okay. And have you updated local authorities as it speaks to first selectmen or the Health Department on just what these phases are, and they've been updated and whatnot, as you're thinking about that? Or has that not happened yet?
I can, I can speak to that.
Okay, sorry.
No, the Health Department, uh, Mr. Cleary has been given these guidelines, and I know Mr. Papa George and Mr. Cleary have had a conversation about the different phases and what those entail and require from us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, sorry, I, I guess, um, I had meant to ask this before, and I forgot. Um, so I guess, and obviously, it's, it's hard to have this conversation right now, because we don't know what the school district guidelines are going to be, and I know those are coming out soon. But, and, and obviously, we've been having a lot of conversations simply based on the summer school guidelines, which were incredibly restrictive, and talking about, you know, with busing and ten people maximum on a bus. So, and obviously, there are more than ten peo- kids on a team. So, and, and obviously, we're hoping that for this regular school year, that these will not be as stringent as they were for the summer. But what do we do about, if there's a disconnect, you know, it, because this sounds like if everything's going to be kind of back to normal, so to speak, August thirty-first for sports, but they're not for schools, how, how does that work, I guess? I'm just a little confused, because this sounds like much more normal than what we've been talking about in our conversations about school. So, I'm, and, and again, I, I realize that we still need to hear from the governor what the guidelines for the school districts will be, but if they are more restrictive, then what?
Well, I, I, let me just jump in on that, because I, I think, and, and Seth and Todd, if you have something you want to add. But I would say that what I'm hearing about what state guidelines will look like, uh, is similar to what was already mentioned. These are, the state is going to provide guidelines, not rules, with, um, local districts having some authority over what they implement, but based within those guidelines because of differences and variability within the state. I'd say, too, that, um, similar conversations, I was rereading the, um, C I A.C. guidelines today, for example. Some of what I'm hearing from the state will be things similar in terms of language, like cohorts, keeping certain num- certain kids together, um, in classrooms or on teams, is, is, so that they're, we know who they're with at all times, in a sense, and trying to limit any issues. I think that the state is looking at, um, trying to, I mean, I think the state's desire is to bring students back as much as possible into physical spaces. Um, and, so I think there will be some matchup. I predict some matchup between what they're doing with the, with the sports and what they're going to do within class instruction. Um, but it, again, as was mentioned earlier, everything depends on the numbers continuing to go in the right direction. Um, and that is, that, you know, things are optimistic right now, but will they remain so? That's, that's really the concern. But I do think the state is trying to match up with C I A.C. Or C I A.C., I should say, is trying to match up with where the state's going.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lieber?
I, Ms. Otelli, tell me if this is okay. I was wondering if you could give, um, an, is this sound all weird?
Gerber?
Is it okay? All right. Um, what happened to juniors who were, in the spring, hoping to have a season where they were going to be recruited? Because if I was a fall athlete, I would be really nervous that the fall season is about to be interrupted, and what would that mean for your prospects of being recruited, you know, play in college? Could you hear any of that?
Yes, we heard it.
Okay.
Um, it's a real challenge, and, you know, that's obviously not unique to Fairfield or Connecticut for that matter. Uh, this, this is something that the colleges are really struggling with as well, trying to figure out how, how they're going to view the athletes that they normally would have seen during the spring, and then, uh, potentially in the fall, if there's, if there's any kind of stoppage of play. And the summer activities being out, you know, a lot of colleges rely on those opportunities as well to see people at showcases and AAU and things like that. So, uh, I don't, I don't have an answer to it yet, but it's certainly one of the challenges.
Do we know if state guidelines impact kids, like club teams, what you're saying, or those spring athletes? I've been so heartbroken for them, because they missed their, likely missed all of their competitive play for their summer, likely, team. Does the state guidance then equally strict on, on those activities?
These guidelines are, from the C I A.C., are just for the school system. There are web teams and other agencies that are, who have started, um, or have practiced, they are, and so some of those, you know, in many, in some towns, already opened up a field.
I can hear that loud.
Some, some towns have already opened up a field, a field, a lot. So, there is that. And also, recruiting, um, virtually, where colleges have set up areas for, um, student athletes, and things along those lines. But it's definitely going to be a challenge, recruiting class. But the next, probably, you will really not, not, to put some...
Yeah, absolutely. And then, uh, Mrs. Gerber had me thinking about volleyball in particular, being somewhat vulnerable. If we have guidelines, and again, hopefully, they will look a little different, but the summer guidelines saying things like children cannot touch the same material in a day, I mean, there goes volleyball, but there also goes football and, and lots of other sports. Um, this is, so forgive my ignorance around volleyball, but is there any way that volleyball can be set up outside in any of our facilities? And that could be the difference between kids competing and not?
Well, I mean, if, if we're talking about touching the ball, that, that wouldn't change that. I mean, it's something we could explore. My daughter plays volleyball. I hope she can play. Um, I, I, I wouldn't say, you know, definitely know. Um, we haven't, we haven't, that hasn't come up in discussion. Uh, you know, the, the volleyball being inside is, is something that has come up in the past about being unfair in terms of access to practice opportunities and things like that, in terms of training, uh, because it's always that way. The pool's locked, the field's open. Um, but I, I don't know if, if moving it outside would make the difference. Uh, if it would, and we could, I mean, we'd certainly try to do it somewhere.
I only, of course, touching the ball is still a whole separate issue, but a lot of the data and a lot of the guidelines seem to suggest that in an open-air outdoor environment, everybody's risk is significantly minimized of contracting, um, this, this disease. So, that was the only reason I, I raised that. But I understand there are so many more unknowns than known, so I won't take that.
Yeah. Well, we, we can talk to Angeles about that, um, and see if we can find some spaces that, that would work in the fall. Um, by the time I could work on that. And we'll bring that up at our league meeting and see if there's, there's other interest, uh, because that's a great point, you know, the outdoor, uh, air difference. So, it'll work.
Thank you.
Do any other board members have questions? Okay, seeing, uh, thank you, Mr. Cornet and Mr. Parker, joining us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Take care. Take care.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to old business. I apologize, an item was left off of our agenda. It was the approval of the 2020-2021 budget adjustments. I'm going to ask the board for a motion to add an agenda item. The motion will be that the Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommended adjustments to the 2000, well, first, let's vote on adding agenda items. Ms. Gerber, Ms. Jacobson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, the agenda item that we are going to add is the Board of Education, that the Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommended adjustments to the 2020-2021 rating budget. That's on table. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Max and Canelli. This document was sent to the board last, at our last meeting, we discussed it there. If anybody has any questions for Mr. Cummings or Ms. LaSalle? Okay, seeing none, we will take it to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine zero. Thank you. Okay, and moving on, adoption of policies. That the Board of Education adopt policies, policy 411.1 and 4211.1, personnel certified, non-certified, nondiscrimination affirmative actions, equal employment opportunity, policy 4118.14, personnel certified, non-certified employees, and section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and policy 4118.112 and 4218.112, personnel certified, non-certified, Title IX, sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. So, motion, Mrs. Max and Canelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any discussion or questions for Mrs. Max and Canelli?
I received no questions from the board, so I don't know if there are any at this time.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes nine zero. Next, deletion of policy 4000.1, recommended motion of the Board of Education, delete policy 4000.9, Mrs. Max and Canelli, seconded by Mrs. Picka. Any questions for Mrs. Max and Canelli or comments?
And this is my reminder to the public, if anyone's listening in, that the deletion is because this has now been incorporated into one of the three policies we just passed. So, we are not getting rid of Title IX protections, we are simply, this policy has been rendered redundant due to the policy we just adopted.
Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Max and Canelli. A reminder, any questions on board? Seeing none, we will take it to a vote. All in favor? Motion passive, nine zero. Moving on to new business, first reading of a new course and text proposal, AP Physics C, mechanics and electricity and magnetism, excuse me, magnetism, excuse me. Mr. Cummings, would you like to give us an introduction to this?
Really quick, thank you, Mike Cummings, Superintendent Schools. We've got with us tonight, Ms. LaSalle, who's our Program Director for 612 Science and the STEAM program, and she can speak to the course proposal as well as the text. This is an AP course that would be added to our menu of AP courses and go with existing AP physics courses. She can also speak to the text, and if the board is interested in moving forward with this, we do have a link that can be sent, well, excuse me, would be sent out tomorrow to the community so that parents can look at the text online, provide commentary through a Google form back to, for feedback. So, Ms. LaSalle, thank you for being here.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. So, the high school science department would like to propose a new course beginning for next year, AP Physics C. I believe you've been given the course proposal, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the course.
Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Um, yeah, I had a question, just based on personal experience as a parent of students who took physics. There was an issue in terms of staffing and having enough staffing for some of the physics classes, so I'm just wondering how that is, how has that been factored into this decision?
By offering AP Physics C, we are planning on using our existing staff to teach that course in addition to the other courses. My prediction is what will happen is we'll have less, maybe less sections of AP Physics II running as students would choose to take AP Physics C as an alternative. So, this provides students an opportunity to choose a calculus-based versus a non-calculus-based physics course. So, it wouldn't require additional staffing.
Okay, and in terms of, I mean, do you have a sense of how the numbers might play out with the new course?
Yeah, we're going to have one section run, you know, just one class, and that would be anticipated, it would start small, as new courses often do, but then as word of mouth spreads, it'll probably grow over time. And what we've seen is what we predicted too. Kids either chose to elect to sign up for Physics C or Physics II, they don't take both. So, in the past, kids, you know, you might have had two classes of AP Physics C at one of the high schools, but now you'll have one of AP, I'm sorry, AP Physics II. Now, you'll have one section of AP Physics II and one fifth section of AP Physics C. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and so, and when you say for next year, do you mean the next academic year? Like, so you're talking 21, 22?
No, 2021.
So, this fall?
Yes.
So, have students already signed up for this course?
We put it in the program of studies with pending BOE approval. So, to see, it also helps us gauge interest in the course as well.
Okay, but I guess this would be maybe to the chair, we're not voting on this tonight, though.
No, we're not. We're going to have a meeting in July to vote on this.
Okay, and so I guess the question then would be, is, would July be enough time? Well, I guess, how many students expressed interest in this?
I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, but we could get them for you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Yeah, before I vote on any course, normally, if we're seeing a new course, there's a whole curriculum document that should be accompanying it. So, I'm wondering, I mean, we're getting this late, we have no curriculum document, and I'm not clear, and I also would be interested, we should already have these numbers to know that this is a viable course that we're supporting, so there seems to be a lot of information missing. I don't know what you can speak to offhand.
So, I have to say, I'm relatively new here as well, so this is a new process for me, and I apologize if there is a concern. The curriculum would be following the AP Physics C curriculum. You know, you follow the curriculum document provided by College Board, and the teachers create a syllabus that follows that, and that would have to be approved by College Board, that hasn't been done yet. But that's something that we could put together. We looked at, we reviewed different textbooks as far as what texts we'd like to use for the course if we were able to run it, and I don't know if that answered your question.
It does. I will say, just putting the board on notice, I'm not willing to support any course that does not come with a curriculum document. This is something that is consistent with all of our courses. We've seen nothing about why this one should be offered. I did appreciate the descriptor, so thank you for including that in our packet, but this is a document that anyone should be able to access on our website, and without that, I would not be willing to support any course. Because if nothing else, I also might ask, is that why are we necessarily choosing another AP course to add? You know, there's a lot of freedom we could have with developing an advanced upper elective. I think of something like calculus, which has the multi-variable calculus option, which therefore doesn't have the structure or the restrictions of an AP curriculum. And so, like, that's a case I would like to hear made of, for these, obviously, gifted students pursuing a definite interest in engineering, I love to think that, I love to think that we have something that would be enabling them to pursue that line. It would be invaluable for the community, you know, the state at large, but I'd like to know why this is better than developing our own advanced elective, and as I said, without a curriculum document, I would not be willing to support this.
We can, let me jump in, we can get you the AP curriculum document, and I want to follow up with what Ms. LaSalle said, and apologize for the delay in this. As you can see, the staff has been at work on this, because there was a disconnect between the development and central office in terms of bringing it forward to the board, which falls on, which falls on central office. We, and we can, again, we can get the document to you. I don't, I don't want to pit, and I know this is not your intent, Ms. Canelli, but the, Dr. Rasmussen is not with us tonight, but there is conversation as we move forward in the math curriculum work around extending our upper electives. As we've seen, and as you're aware, we've seen an increase in the number of students who are coming into high school, having completed Algebra I, having moved to the math sequence. We are seeing more students who take that upper elective math, and so that's something that they're going to be bringing forward as possibilities in their curriculum review work. So, that's, one does not break the other, I guess, I'd say.
Okay.
And I think that the work here was to bolster the physics offerings to students because it was, and I hate to put it this way around the curriculum, but a relatively quick way to move forward in extending the science curriculum to those students who want to pursue those types of career. An AP course comes essentially almost ready-made, whereas a multi-variable class would take some time to build. And again, since we were already doing the math work, we wanted to be part of that overall effort.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
First of all, this course is not listed as pending BOE approval in either the Ward or Ludlow Program of Studies for 2021. Other courses are listed as pending approval, but this one is not. You might want to go and check that. I have it right up on the other screen. I don't know why that was not listed, it seems odd. I have a lot of the same concerns that Mrs. Canelli raised. I don't have an objection to it, it looks like it will align with an existing AP course. You know, if there is demand for it, I understand. And let me just confirm one of the things you said, so you are going to be teaching this with existing staff. So, there's not going to be a budgetary impact in terms of increased teacher headcount for this, right? But will there be any costs that we're going to incur from program development for this curriculum, or is this going to be based off of an existing curricular outline?
Costs in terms of materials, I would say that we could use the current materials we have, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we could use our current physics materials for this course, they would be appropriate. It would be, the cost associated would be sending teachers that would teach the course to training, which I had already requested in the budget as a placeholder for next year, and also sometimes to put the curriculum document together off of the AP, the College Board's curriculum document, which also I had put into the budget for next year as a placeholder.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you, just a couple of questions. So, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this course was already offered out, and there are students at both Ludlow and Ward Air High Schools that have now registered for this course and have probably been notified by their teacher regarding summer work for this course, is that correct? If there's summer work, I don't know if there is, but normally APs there are, so is this already kind of in flux, like moving already, or is that not the case in this instance?
So, I'm going to speak to the fact that it wasn't listed in the BO, in the Program of Studies, I don't know. I requested for the Program of Studies that it said pending BOE approval. I'm not sure what happened there, and I will follow up on that. Then, students requested the course, and we did scheduling with planning, if the course was approved, that it would run. But it was always pending approval from the board.
Okay, so, just to reiterate my question, I'm just curious, and maybe this is something that Mike, you have to get back to us on, you know, have students been notified of their teacher, they're doing summer work already, or is that not a part of this course? And if you don't know the answer to that right now, that's fine, but if we're talking about a disruption here, that would be good to know.
We're going to have to check.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Picka?
I'm sorry, I just need a clarification. Has the curriculum already been written for this course, or it's going to be written as the class proceeds? Like, are you planning this unit by unit?
No, we would develop the, we waited on the curriculum development pending approval, and really, the curriculum is outlined by the College Board. So, it's just a process of taking the College Board's curriculum and making it our own. So, we would do that before the course starts.
And are you writing the curriculum, or are other physics teachers writing the curriculum?
It would not be me, it would be the teachers, and again, they would be going off of the College Board's AP Physics C curriculum document.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, just really quickly, I did check, and there is summer work for AP Physics C listed on the whole list of all of the AP summer work. There is something there for that. Thank you for looking at that, I was wondering that.
Any other questions, if I remember? Do you know how many other districts in Connecticut are offering this form?
No, I don't, but I could find that information out for you.
And this is a little bit off topic, since we start at school, and we don't necessarily know that students are going to be back in classrooms every day, five days a week, for the entire school year. Do you have any concerns about starting a new class with distance learning possibly being a factor?
Of course, the possibility of distance learning is concerning across the board. I think, again, I would guess that the student that would sign up for this course would be an upper level, most likely a senior, and I think it might be, even in a distance learning format, be a good preparation for college.
I'm more concerned, honestly, with just the teacher, but this is a new course, the teacher's going to be teaching in a new format, as well as the student. Do you, how do you feel the feedback was from other science classes, AP science classes in the distance learning format?
I would say from speaking to the AP science teachers, that they felt their AP courses went very well, and they didn't have, you know, I think the concerns about running courses is very different at different levels. You know, it's very different at the high school level than it is with younger students. students. And I think it's different with upperclassmen and it's different with students that might be signing up for AP classes in general. So, um, they, um, they had mostly positive experiences from what I've talked to them.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Pickow, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I don't have the program of studies in front of me. If you could just tell me, you said that this, the difference between this physics class and the other one is that the calculus is not factored into this. So what is the prerequisite for math for them to take this course?
The prerequisite, they, I'm going to look, pull up the proposal while I'm talking to you. The prerequisite for math is, uh, successful completion or concurrently enrolled in AP Calc AB or AP Calc BC.
But this course doesn't require calculus?
This is, this, yes, it does require calculus. That's what it is. It's a calculus-based physics course.
Got you.
We have an offer, and, and one thing I will add, uh, the driver for proposing the course has been student request. So there's been a lot of students who have asked for this course, students who are interested in going to engineering programs. They feel that it would give them a leg up in the application process if they take in a college, a calculus-based physics course.
Anything else, Ms. Pickow? Uh, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, so one final question. I apologize, I don't have the program of studies in front of me either. Um, does this course have a lab component to it that's outside of the regular block time? Like a mini lab to it?
Yes, all the AP science courses.
Okay. So this would, if we didn't approve this for this fall, are we, student scheduling issues that would have to be addressed?
There would, there would have to be, um, changes. And again, it's not a large number right now because it's a new course and there's not a large number. But generally what students have done, I, I'm assuming here, but I think it's probably correct, is that they've signed up for AP Physics C instead of AP Physics II. So if, if AP Physics C wasn't offered, um, though they would probably be disappointed, they, they could take AP Physics II.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you. I, I have to confess, I'm feeling a little blindsided. Um, I, I was coming in tonight with good feelings about this. I'm, I'm extremely pro-physics. My main question was going to be, why aren't you calling it electromagnetism instead of breaking up the universal force into two distinct things, one being or not? But, um, I'm looking at the budget book. The budget book does have, uh, let's see, $23,924 for 2021 for grade six through 12 curriculum development. The only thing that I can see in that, in that list that is going to apply to this is AP training. A whole bunch of other stuff is listed, but it doesn't list that there's going to be a new course anywhere in this, in this summary. Is that, Mike, is that where I would have found that we're going to put in a new course? I'm sorry, you mute me.
Yeah. Depending on the account number, uh, that you're looking at, I don't know if you have what account number you're looking at.
Uh, I'm, I'm looking at the materials in the back, page 158, the, the detail. It, it lists implementation guidance assessments.
Oh, okay.
1010 AP training, assured experiences, various trainings, professional learning, conferences and workshops, virtual memberships. I mean, that's, that's where I see this broken out and it doesn't say we're launching a new course.
No, and that's not an exhaustive, just as you read it, it's not an exhaustive list to the level of detail. Um, I would, we have a couple of teachers that are going to be involved with this and because it's an AP physics course being based off of an existing curriculum, it's not a tremendous amount of hours, but that's where you would have seen it. I just don't think it was broken out as, in specifics like that.
All right. I may ask for the future, for if, if things like this are being contemplated in budget season, that we be presented with information that this is going to be part of a new course development? I don't feel like this was.
No, and it should.
We have, we have a lot to look over and details get missed and I, I don't want to, I don't want to undermine the work that's been done on this and I see the value of it. I'm just, I'm feeling like it's coming extremely late in the day for people who are already signed up for this course and we haven't approved it yet. So that's, that's kind of where I am with that.
Agreed.
Ms. Asa?
I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said here, but really piggybacking on Mr. Peterson here, um, I appreciate the work that went into this, but, um, as Mrs. Max and Cannelli said, this is absolutely not the way this is to be presented, um, no matter whose fault this is. Um, so I think we need to restart here. And also I, I look at this as there are budget implications. So from what I've heard and what's in the book and what we just discussed, this to me seems like new curriculum, new initiative, or whatever you want to call it. Okay, when we went through the budget season, this budget season was very tight and we got cut quite a bit and we were able to carry forward, um, a good safety net and a non-lapsing account for things. But I think we need to be very careful and go back and make sure that this was all accounted for if we're going to do that this year, because if it wasn't, then we need to hit pause. Because we sat in front of the other town bodies and said that we were not introducing anything new. And if this falls in there, I'm not saying it does, but if it does, we need to really look hard at that and take a lesson learned.
Mr. Asa, it, it is in the budget that we protected the, um, for a large part in the budget process, we protected the instructional and curriculum accounts, as, as you, as you know, as the board knows, there's not a lot of funding in that. So we were very protective of the amount of money in there, although we did not increase the raw from the previous year to this year, um, the amounts. We just redistributed the funds, but we did put this in as a new textbook purchase in the budget and, uh, again, we protected that all along.
But going back to what Mrs. Max and Cannelli said, we're, we're in June and we're to approve this in July for kids already signed up for something, that we have not had a proper vetting or anything. So, um, not to discount the science department or anybody involved with this, but this, um, this needs more discussion.
Yeah, and I, and what I'm saying is, I agree with you. I think that, uh, our ten is never to put the board into a position where we're coming forward with you, and we did this. We, we don't want to bring anything forward to you that's in every other aspect a done deal, um, and put the board into a spot where they, they're kind of back to the wall. That was not, that's, that's what happened and that was, that was our mistake.
Ms. Cumming, thank you for recognizing that. Um, I do share some of the frustration of my fellow board members. I would ask just for those students that are currently enrolled for this course, if they could be contacted and just maybe tell them to wait a few weeks before starting their summer work until the board takes action on this, to say the very least. Um, but I know that there were some other questions. Mrs. Max and Cannelli, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, and I'm, I'm cataloging my questions so I don't hit them all of you now. I just, I have to say in public, I don't understand why we're getting this June 23rd. And, and never mind all of the missing pieces. That budget book was put together especially in November and December, and I don't understand that. And I think a case needs to be made for adding another AP course. As we know, AP physics is not one where we've had demonstrated success. And now we're tackling a more rigorous curriculum. And I, I just, I don't, I, I'm cataloging my questions. I'm not going to do them all now. I'll shoot off an email, but I don't understand why we're getting this June 23rd.
I think the only, the only thing I can say to you is it was just missed. It was just missed in the course of the second half of the year. There's no other explanation for it. There was a disconnect between the time with the budget together and when it was time to, to, um, essentially it were rolling out the end, towards the end of the year, um, it was brought forward that we hadn't done this. And, and so there's no other explanation but other than it was missed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mr. Cummings. And I, I do, um, I'm not to make excuses, but I do appreciate this is a challenging time and I know that it is, it is difficult, um, not being physically in the same building with people. Um, that things do often get missed, but, uh, I invite board members to please follow up with your questions to the superintendent and Mrs. LaSalle. Any final questions on this? Okay. Thank you. Seeing, thank you, Mrs. Helfman LaSalle for presenting tonight. Moving on, Food Services Financial Survey and Mrs. Muntell. Would you like to walk us through the document?
Sure. Doreen Muntell, Executive Director of, um, Finance and Business Services. Um, I think somewhere on this screen too, we also have Rick Emery and, um, Maura O'Malley from Whitsins, but I'll give you an overview. Um, I'll go over the meals first. Uh, we did, we compared meals this year to February of last year because that was the last, uh, full month of service that we had. And as you can see, um, we were doing well. The program was doing well. Uh, we were on a good path. Um, and I should also say that this, um, these percentages don't even reflect the average meal served per day on, uh, it hasn't been adjusted for the days that serve it, uh, meals were not served or, um, half-days or whatever. So it's actually even better than this. Um, so the, the, the program was on a good path, um, and then COVID hit and, um, things changed, as we all know. Um, during the COVID period, the three-month period, um, the food service staff, uh, served like something like 53,000 meals, um, over that three-month period. Um, and I, I'd like to take an opportunity to, to recognize those people. I'm just going to, uh, mention their first name, Linda, Margaret, Tisha, Mary Alice, Malane, uh, Tim, uh, Maura. Uh, these are the food service staff, uh, either in the kitchen or behind the scenes. And also I'd like to thank the custodians that helped us, uh, to distribute meals when we change course and, and we're handing out meals. Um, so this whole COVID situation has, you'll see in the financials, taken a financial, uh, has had a financial, um, impact on, on the program and will, you know, we're projected to have a loss. Uh, despite that, um, we are recommending no, uh, increase in meal prices for next year, uh, because of the economy and the impact that on our families, um, we didn't think it was, it was the time to do it. Um, so that's, that's, uh, in a nutshell, everything about food services that's happened over the, the past year. I don't know if Maura and, um, Rick, if you want to mention anything from the Whitsins perspective?
Hello?
Whitsins, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was, no, we've, we've done everything the district's asked. It's been a tough time, you know, we haven't served a, on a daily basis, we're not serving a lot of people, but there are people in need. So it was something we were proud to do and the team has stepped up and done everything we've asked them to do.
Thank you for your service during this time.
Well, it's really more in the team. I just support them, just like Doreen supports me.
Doreen supports all of us at times.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, do any board members have any questions? Or Doreen, do you have anything else to add before I take you to the board?
No, I think that's it.
Ms. Jacobson, keep your hand up.
Um, Ms. Jacobson, um, to Mrs. Muntell, um, did we not have a guaranteed minimum for fiscal year 20 or did we have one and just because of the situation that's not happening or, because I know we normally have a guaranteed minimum profit?
We did, but we, or we do, but we had, um, we had, we had discuss, we had discussion with Whitsins that, um, when, on the out, uh, outset of the COVID, that, um, that would not be able to be sustained because it was a losing situation, what we were doing. So we knew that upfront.
Was it the same as this year, last year? Was it the 95?
No, it was 130. And we were, we were on track for that.
Yeah. In February, we were at 119,000.
Okay. And is the same provision in place for next year, fiscal year 21?
Yes.
So I, I understand the, the prices, uh, of course, at this time, but are we looking at potentially, I mean, obviously we don't know what things are going to look like next year at this point, but yet we're kind of proving this right now, um, we could be looking at another substantial loss?
Uh, we could. There's also, there's little known as to.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Um, there's a lot of uncertainty as to whether or not, if there's any funding available for food service.
But so the answer is yes, you're looking at another substantial loss next year?
If the situation were to continue, I think we need to, um, decide at that point, you know, how we would handle it.
Yeah.
We couldn't sustain another long-term.
Okay. All right. Just on the back of the radar, just for everyone and for you, that that's something I'd like to hear more about through the summer or as we look at what's happening.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to put the approval of the participation in the healthy food certification program on the table, recommended motion of the Board of Education approved participation in the healthy food certification program for the school year 2020, 2021 as follows, and seeing no objection, I'm just going to wave a reading of the rest of that. Um, Mr. Asa, seconded by Mrs. Leeper. Any last minute questions before we take it to vote? Seeing none, to the floor for vote, all in favor?
I think Ms. Leeper.
Do you have a question? No, she was voting. All in favor? opposed, abstentions, motion passive, nine, zero. Moving on to the financial report and approval of budget transfers for the 2019, 2020 school year. Ms. Muntell? Laura George, still?
Okay. As you can see, the, um, the latest protection has us up to 6 million, um, balance, it's pretty, uh, it's been done as of the 23rd. Um, for, you know, some things are, um, absolutely final in this and, and others will continue to, um, to change a little bit, um, through June 30th and even, um, in July as we get invoices. Um, I do have to make a correction. Uh, if you'll notice on, on, uh, column three, the, the transfer requested, uh, we missed covering the pupil service, uh, negative balance in 92, 534. So I have to, um, we, we have to cover that and we'll take it out of the personnel service. So that negative 309, 740 becomes a negative 402, 274 to cover those other two areas. Um, we, um, as I explained in my memo, this time is a little different. Um, the, um, transfers will be done and then we will, uh, because of the non-lapsing account, we will, uh, we just discovered that we have to transfer all the residual balances in individual accounts into a transfer out account, uh, to be transferred into the, um, non-lapsing account. And, uh, because right now we're over the 3.3, we would transfer the 3.3 in July when we close and then we will, um, address that, seeing the Board of Finance for the, any additional balance in, in the following, um, because it's required to vote. Uh, and hopefully we'll be able to put that in there also.
Any questions for Ms. Muntell? Mr. Peterson?
I'm always the one who asks about utilities. Maybe a joint question for Ms. Muntell and Mr. Papa George. Just, just to make sure, because when budget time rolls around, these utility numbers are always very fuzzy. Are we, are we certain about these numbers? These numbers are actual billed amounts? These are, you, you understand what I'm saying?
On the savings?
Correct.
The savings you're talking, the savings, those are final. Uh, uh, Mr. Papa George might be able to, uh, need to address an issue with heat. A question came up about heat in a, in a few areas and we were double checking with, um, uh, some of the vendors to make sure that they were accurate, but, um, I don't, Angela, do you remember that situation?
Yeah, we're double checking with the vendors to confirm they're accurate and that they were actual meter.
they were actual meter readings and not estimates. Some of the schools, we also recognized, like Roger Level Middle School, the heating bill was higher than we anticipated, but they also ran a food service program there. So there were some schools that were actually still occupied. And even though we initially had shut down the heat in a lot of buildings, we did turn it back on in a few because of some activities going on within the buildings.
Sure, I mean, I guess the, you know, the, the foundation of my question is I don't want to be blindsided in July when we get a larger bill than what we anticipated, but it sounds like that's not, if, if we're dealing with actual meter reading, that's not what's going to be happening. And just as a tangential question, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
These are the full, these are, these are, this is the full 12 months of the year. We, we only pay through May. June is the first month in the, in the next fiscal year. So if anything, these, these balances might grow if we find that there was a mistake because we were questioning whether that, why they, the heat in certain areas were higher than what we anticipated.
Well, I, I did not know that. I have a tangential question, we came over this in budget season, Angeles, about having better tracking for utilities. There was going to be a software system. Is part of, is any part of that active now?
Correct. So we are meeting with a company that does do a better calculations for predicting costs based on past experiences and years. They have a very good reputation of projecting costs for buildings. We, we were supposed to meet with them in March and that got delayed, but we are now looking at the first or second week in July to meet with them and go over what they could offer to us.
All right, that's great. Sorry to go off on a, on a tangent there, I'm all set.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, Doreen, sorry. What was the first thing you said that was missed that makes that first 309,740 really 402? I, I missed that piece. What was missed and where should it be?
In column three, you see the negative 309,740 going down to the charges, but you'll notice nothing was put in to personnel line 19. There's a negative 92,534 that needs to be covered there. In column two.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is column C, line 19, should be 402 something?
No, we need to, we need to move into their 92,534 to zero that out. The 402,274 will be a line nine. Negative 402,274.
Okay, so that was just simply a, a cell calculation error. There's everything listed here, it's just a math error.
It's, it's just an oversight and missing that one number.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mrs. Max McInally?
To piggyback on Mr. Asa's question, again, I was the one who, the non-lapsing, it always bothered me how we were going to reconcile that. I don't understand the 92,000 because obviously then that means lines one through eight are all inaccurate as well. If we're saying that that is going to add up to a number that's 92,534 more, unless I am misunderstanding you. And if that's the case, I don't understand why all those numbers were wrong in the first place.
Okay, columns one and two are absolutely correct. There's nothing wrong with those numbers.
How do we, then, but if we're transferring money out of an area, that means we didn't spend it. That's what I'm not getting.
Okay, we have 1.423 million in Personnel Services available to move. In column three, we were only moving out, it only shows that we're moving 309,740 out of there. In essence, we really need to move 402,274 because 92,534 of it needs to go on line 19 in column three.
Right, that I understand. What are you getting that 92,000 from?
From the 1,2423, it's in column two, on line nine.
Okay, I get that, but that was allocated to something. That's what I'm not getting from this. I under, I understand that we're just going to add 92,000 to the 309 number, but if we're saying that we didn't spend it under Total Personnel Services, I'm just asking, where did we not spend it?
In the line eight in column one, those, that number is, is good. It's not a matter of where it's coming from, it's a matter of how it got there, it's a matter of where it's going, if that makes any sense.
No, but I'm going to, sorry, ignorance of accounting and I'll follow up with you myself because I'd like to understand that. And then my second question is that I assume that if the Board of Finance does not approve our increase in the amount in the non-lapsing account, that it then becomes a dollar amount being returned to the town, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Muntell? Okay, seeing none. So I need, the recommended motion, the Board of Education approves the line item transfers for the 19, 2019, 2021 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number three and.
As amended?
As amended. But let's make a motion to amend. Well, we didn't put this motion on the table yet. As amended. By Ms. Muntell. That works?
I'm sorry, that, that works.
Have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, second? Mr. Asa, all in favor? Motion passes, nine, zero. And Ms. Muntell, can I just ask you just to email Mrs. Gerber those figures for the minutes?
Absolutely. We'll do a revised sheet too.
Thank you. To here, act and consider, here, consider and act upon a letter to the Connecticut State Department of Education that the Board of Education approves the letter to send to the Connecticut State Department of Education per enclosure number four. Motion, Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Leeper. Just for the public's sake, at our last meeting, Ms. Leeper asked the superintendent if there is anything the board could be doing in terms of advocacy at the state level during our meeting. During open board comment, Mrs. Max McInally indicated that she would like to pursue that as well and was willing to work with Ms. Leeper to draft a letter. I had asked the board for, to send me any copy or additional feedback that they might have to include in this letter. I didn't receive any revised copy, but I did see the intent, the intent of the board was open to hearing what Mrs. Max McInally and Ms. Leeper would present. And here we are. Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Max McInally, I will give it to you to just present the letter and give us additional background. Hold on.
You're muted.
Yeah, Ms. Leeper? Okay, my back, okay. Your back on. We'll start with you, being that you were the first person to bring this idea to the board and follow up, but Mrs. Max McInally can speak after you.
Sure, so I was just thinking that we have been presented with a unique opportunity to provide feedback to the state, Commissioner of the Department of Ed as well as the State Board of Ed on our experience in a larger sized district in trying to implement our summer school guidelines. And it's our hope that this can help inform their reopening guidelines in the fall. So of course, we're not public health experts and we're not in the optimal place to write our own guidance as to what is safest for our students and staff. But what we can do is let the people who are making those decisions know what is implementable and what has not been implementable for a district our size. And then also which guidelines have, would cause us to need additional funding in order to implement. And, yeah, I just want to make it public that Connecticut has been a leader in the country in our approach and effectiveness to COVID. And so we're hopeful that this can continue on this trajectory and allow for the reopening of schools. As working parents know, without reopening schools, there can't really be a full reopening of the economy. And so if there's a way that we can help inform the decisions that are being made up in Hartford, sort of viewed it as our responsibility to do so. And in that wordy preamble, we wrote this letter.
Mrs. Max McInally?
Well, thank you. Um, so, uh, first, thank you. I have hats off to Mrs. Leeper who took the lead on writing the base of the letter. And so it was exactly structured how I'd been envisioning it as well, which is really going right back to the guidelines that were given to the summer school and really having a, you know, fact-based reflection on what the impact of these guidelines were. I added a few things, but this really is coming from her. So again, my thanks to her appreciation and my thanks to Mr. Asa for also for taking a look over the letter. But it just, I, I think it's a shame when we, as a body of nine, are in a position to give this feedback. Obviously, we know that some of, some directive from the state is imminent and I recognize that. However, it's also my understanding that what we're about to hear is not definite in nature, it's not final in nature. And this is our opportunity as a board to speak on behalf of our staff, on behalf of other town bodies who recognize the fiduciary impact of these mandates from the state. And so this was our opportunity to, or we wanted to take this opportunity to give that feedback and, and reflect some of our concerns. And I'm always one to believe, I'd rather speak up ahead of time. I don't like feeling powerless. You know, I wanted to take, I wanted to support Mrs. Leeper in the idea of if people are making decisions in a vacuum, and of course, I know they've been besieged by, you know, some feedback, but I don't want to attribute our responsibility and leave it on to others. And I just thought that this could be an important statement of whatever value that this board could put forward to the state.
Thank you. Excuse me, before I just go to Mr. Asa, did I put this motion on the table officially?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Asa.
Yeah, I just, first of all, if I could just ask everybody that's not talking to go on mute, it would be greatly appreciated. Give you a couple of seconds to do that. Thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Leeper and Mrs. Max McInally. As Mrs. Max McInally mentioned, I, I was supportive of this idea. I didn't necessarily take part in, in the writing of it, but I was able to, you know, to see it. And once I did see it, I do support it. I think we have a opportunity to give the state feedback and as Mr. Cummings said, we're going to be getting some guidance hopefully later this week. But that guidance is that, that's it, is guidance based on where we hope to be with numbers in the state. Connecticut's doing a phenomenal job right now with the lowest rates of transmissions and hospitalizations. So we're going in the right direction, but as everybody knows, that could change at a time. We're seeing it in other parts of the country, that maybe they didn't take as good precautions as Connecticut, but it's still a possibility. And I think we have an opportunity to inform and give feedback to the state officials that are really the ones guiding us. So I do wholeheartedly support the, the notion of this and, and how it's written. I do hope that the board supports it. If we do not have unanimous support, I would still, myself as an individual board member, sign this letter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pico, do you want to hand up?
I did. I wanted, just to add that I know, in, in far of giving guidance to the state, I know, Mrs. Vitale, you've been on phone calls through CAVE and through the Commissioner, I know Mr. Cummings has. So I just, I've listened to what the board members said about why they wanted to send the letter, but I just wanted to reiterate, this wasn't the only way that we were giving feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Pico, yes. And as we shared at the last meeting, Mr. Cummings, you know, through CAPS, I participate every week, CAVE does have a board check-in for board chairs. The head of CAVE is in weekly meetings with the Commissioner. He actually joked, the Commissioner joked that he sees vibrator more than he does his own children. So the board chairs throughout the state have shared feedback. I will fully appreciate that this is a different avenue for communication and I absolutely support the board wanting to, to have a united voice in this. But I do want for the public to know that feedback has been given to state officials. It may not be direct. It has been through the associations, the members. But that said, we have had, the Commissioner was on the board chair call last week. He did indicate that the summer guidelines were drafted at the end of April at a time that COVID was peaking. So the guidance was given based on the facts that they had at that time, the last two months. Thankfully, the numbers are better in Connecticut. They've learned, health officials have learned a lot about this virus. There's still a lot they don't know. But he hinted that maybe the guidance that we're going to be seeing this week will be less restrictive than what was put forth in the summer. But, you know, that remains to be seen. But thank you, Ms. Muntell. Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson. Thank you to Mrs. Leeper, Mrs. Max McInally and everyone involved in this letter. I'm personally thrilled to see us acting as a body to send some advocacy out of Fairfield together. I had submitted actually to the Chair, Mr. Cummings and, and the leadership, a request if it was possible, if we had any actual or estimated numbers for some of the items that are in this letter. And I know that, Mr. Cummings, you said that you were going to see if they were readily available, not wanting staff to spend a lot of time on digging this up, but even if we had any estimates of, you know, the number of custodians or the cost of all the supplies, just the extra nurses. I mean, were we able to get any of that that we could add to this letter or we not, not have any of that?
We have, I have, I have one piece of information based on what we know about transportation expectations. And Ms. Muntell was able to put this together and I'll just read you the number. If we were to follow the, the transportation expectations into the, for the summer program into the new school year, we would need an additional 177 buses for a cost of about $20 million.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. So I think that that kind of information, if we have, if we, I don't know if anyone at Jen and Jen are amenable to adding that to this letter as an, I don't know if this is an amendable document at this point or just open to feedback at this point. And if there's just anything else like that, I know this is a very timely situation that we need to get this out probably pretty quickly, but I just think even just that one point or anything else that we can add that actually lends the meat to what we know to be through. Second of all, and I don't know if Mrs. Max McInally or Mrs. Leeper would be amenable to this too, I was wondering if you would be amenable to seeing the interim Commissioner of Public Health or the Governor on this letter. Since ultimately, it will be his guidelines that come out for the fall.
Ms. Leeper? Ms. Max McInally?
Just quickly to say, I was viewing this as like an editable, editable document. So whatever board members had changes that you'd like reflected in here, I think that's great. I was treating this sort of as just like a draft for us to work off of and I completely agree that having the numbers makes this much more powerful in the scale of which some of these guidelines are not implementable clearer for both the public and also administration. So I would be happy to add those things and of course also add both the Governor and I think you said the interim Director of the Department of Public Health. Did I miss anything?
Wow, thank you. And I agree, right now, this is in the Governor's hands. So if we're going to send this letter, we should absolutely copy him on this. Mrs. Max McInally?
Um, so as a matter of process, is it, is it a process? So then we need to make a, a So then we need to make a, a motion to amend this, that after the Fairfield Board of Education, CC, Governor Ned Lamont, and I don't know the person's name, so I don't know what to have in there, if people are okay with that being fludgy and we figure it out to add. But now I'm also realizing, should we also have all nine names?
Ms. Leeper?
My preference is to have all nine names, but I was hesitant to put anybody's name even on a draft letter before we talked about it. So I had sort of put the Fairfield Board of Ed, kind of as a stand-in, if, just preliminarily before we had this conversation. That's all.
So I, I would want to put forward the motion to make three additions to this letter. One, almost a verbatim quote of Mr. Cummings of just that fact sentence after the, oh, my place. Um, after the single sentence of the second paragraph, you know, for 2020 dash 2021, these guidelines would have entailed or would entail 177 buses at the cost of $20 million. That would be, the first part, second part would be the addition of our names, and the third part would be the CC. And Mrs. Gerber, I am sorry for the worst worded amendment ever.
Okay, so that is the amendment, kind of second to the amendment.
Wait, can I ask you a final question?
Yeah.
It, um, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, in your amendment, did you include the addition of the governor and the, okay, sorry, I didn't hear that, just trying to make sure.
Mr. Asa? Um, so, my great second in. Um, so discussion of the, oh, my goodness.
So to be clear, Mrs. Max and Cannelly made the motion and I seconded it.
Thank you.
All right, discussion on the amendment. Ms. Pico, you had your hand up.
Agreed with Mrs. Jacobson, and I don't think that that should be the only dollar amount that we should put in there. I think that we should talk about how much additional staffing we needed in order to have, um, live instruction, um, extra costs, extra services. All, all of that dollar amount needs to be in there, in that letter to show what it would cost the district in order to provide that education.
Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I, I, I think, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Cummings' mouth, but I, I do think that, um, when this information was requested, um, it, you know, when Mrs. Jacobson asked for that information, he said he would do what he could that wouldn't take up too much staff time, and the only information we had was the bus information, which I think is very compelling. Um, and I do think, as other board members have mentioned, that the clock is ticking, and if we've been told that, you know, the preliminary guidelines at least are going to be coming out this week, that, you know, it's going to be July soon, that I would just hesitate to spend too much time trying to track down other numbers because it could use up a tremendous amount of staff time. Um, and I just think that we should not wait too long to get this moving, so.
Can I just say, um, that, that was in, in the guidance that we got from the state around summer school, the transportation was a hard wall. I mean, it was clear what that entailed. The other numbers around custodial services, cleaning, those would be, um, more difficult to, um, determine once, until we have students actually back at school and we have a better understanding what the state is going to require under that. So that, that was the best number we could give, given the amount of time we had with everything else going on.
I'm also hesitant to have the staff, staff that spent too much time on this considering this, if for the summer guidelines, which is passed, we don't necessarily know what the fall guidelines will look like based on some of the conversations from, um, the commissioner, who fully knows, he's hearing it from pretty much everybody, that the transportation guidance is cost prohibitive. So I'm very interested to see what that looks like, if it's a hard number to that, and just keep on drilling that back, um, I, home to the state, I think that is compelling. Um, I agree with Mrs. Gerber, you really, um, should act upon this. I think the fact that we're sending it is, uh, invaluable, but we shouldn't wait. Ms. Leeper?
Oh, no, I don't have anything to add other than I agree. I think, um, you know, that one data point alone highlights, highlights what we're up against with these guidelines.
Yeah, Ms. Jacobson, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to, as we're voting on the amendment, give you the actual name of the acting commissioner, um, of Department of Public Health, if you want that for the record, for the letter or not. Like, do you want me to give you the name?
Yep.
Okay, Deidre, D.E.I.D.R.E., Gifford, G.I.F.F.O.R.D., and she is serving as the acting commissioner of DPH, or Department of Public Health.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, taking the floor for vote on the amendment. Do you need it reread or everybody good? Okay, um, all in favor of the motion is amended. Ms. Jacobson, your hand up. Motion carries nine zero. Back to the main motion. Any additional comments on the main motion? As amended. Ms. Vitale?
Hi. Just want...
Uh, we're losing it.
Oh, can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Okay. I just wanted to thank, um, Jennifer Leeper and Jen Max and Cannelly for writing this. I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad that we can all act as a board together to get some feedback to the state. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none to the board for vote. All in favor, motion carries nine zero. Thank you, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Max and Cannelly. Okay, moving on, that the Board of Education approved employment contract with the superintendent of schools, Michael Cummings, from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Jacobson. Um, I'm also going to, we usually do not discuss, uh, personnel issues in front, uh, in public, so, um, I just want to, uh, just say thank you, Mr. Cummings, that we are happy to move this motion forward, me personally. Um, all in favor? What? No?
I believe we need to make, uh, some...
Amendment?
Here on this motion, amendment motions.
Um, Mrs., can I have a motion, well, Mrs. Gerber, would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend, thank you. Um, I would like to add to the motion, um, uh, the following, uh, wording, following, uh, the June 30th, 2023, and then add, and that the Fairfield Board of Education set the superintendent's base salary for 2020-21 at a 2% increase over the 2019-20 base salary.
Can I second to that? Mr. Asa? Um, any discussion? Seeing none, back to the board, we're voting on the amendment to the main motion. All in favor? Ms. Cannelly, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pico, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, and Mrs. Vitale, motion carries nine zero. Ms. Vitale, did I say you? Um, motion carries nine zero. Back to the main motion, as amended. To the board, all in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Um, Mr. Cummings, I speak for the board, that we, we're looking forward to working with you in the upcoming year. We have a lot of, uh, of important work to do, and I hope, I think that I speak for everyone, that I hope that we get to do that work in person, in school buildings, and together. Well, I love seeing you all, um, on my screen. Um, I miss seeing you in person. Thank you for, for your work in which, I think we're going to call it crisis year. It's been one crisis after the other. Um, and I think I speak for the community that we appreciate your, your thoughtful, absolute leadership. Um, and thank, thank you for your, for your, for your service to our children, for our staff, and, and really to our entire community. It's been a very difficult time, um, at our school district, and this is to, not only to you as the school district leader, but to the staff that are all here, um, that I'm looking at all of you. I wanted to say thank you. Um, you know, it, it really, there's so many people that got us through these last three months. Um, and I appreciate all the hard work. I, it's been a long, a long call. Um, we're not done yet, but, um, if I, I couldn't have asked for better people to, um, to lead us through this. So thank you, and to any teachers, um, listening, actually, I hope nobody, no teachers are listening, I hope everybody is enjoying time with their family. We thank them as well. So with that, we're going to move on, because I know that everybody is getting tired. Approval of the June 9th, 2020 special and regular meeting minutes. The Board of Education approved the BOE special and regular meeting minutes dated June 9th, 2020. All in favor? Or motion, Mrs. Gerber? Well, you know what? It would help me if you all didn't raise your hand at the same time. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Peterson, any discussion? Seeing none to the board for a vote. Everybody's raising their hand. All, motion carries nine to zero. Superintendent's report.
All right, all right, well, I'm off. All right, thank you. Thank you again, uh, and I just want to echo, Ms. Vitale, what you just said, um, you know, I'm, uh, I'm very fortunate, I think we're all very fortunate that we work with a talented group of, uh, staff in the Fairfield Public Schools, and that's, I, I want that statement to be, uh, heard as inclusively as possible because it really extends out to everybody who works here and the jobs they do. I think that there's a great abiding concern for, for students that not only permeates the school district, but clearly the town as well. And, um, with that as a, a force, really, um, our staff responded this year. And, um, I want to echo to the, the thanks to the executive directors who are with us tonight. Um, you know, clearly, clearly this job can't be done, my job can't be done without them. Uh, in the best of times, it certainly can't be done in the most difficult of times. And I, I want to call out especially, um, Ms. Goddardman, who has had no idea what she was signing up for, uh, back in August when she agreed to come on and do the interim deputy superintendent job. No idea what this year would evolve into, and I, I want to thank her for her friendship with the board. Also, uh, Mr. Arnone, um, who, um, picked a heck of a year to go out on retirement, but perhaps, perhaps it helped contribute to the decision. Um, and I, again, we're going to miss their, their presence, their leadership in the Fairfield Public Schools, so I just want to extend my thanks to them, and I look forward to welcoming Dr. Parrish and Doctors Avetancik, um, who will be with us starting, uh, next week, next week, hopefully. Um, and they're, they're taking, um, taking their seats at the table to help us move forward. Um, I also, um, in the thank you mood, I want to thank, um, again, everybody who put together support for the high school graduations last week, uh, for anybody who attended, for anybody who, who heard about them. Um, they were clearly quite successful. We could not have done this, I'm going to say this forever, we cannot have done this without the support of the First Selectwoman, um, the Chiefs of the Fire and Police, Department of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and all the folks that helped out on that night. But also, a special thanks to the headmasters for their leadership around this. Um, Mr. Commander extended themselves and got into territory, um, which I'm sure never, I, I can testify is not part of the administrative training program. Um, their, their work was just exemplary, and those, those two ceremonies, um, were very special. I think the town needed them, the graduates certainly needed them, but they were just very special. My, um, my thanks to them. Real quick on, on the reentry update, as has been mentioned throughout the evening, we are expecting Thursday morning to get a guidance on the return to school in the fall. Um, as we said before, this is guidance, not rules. Um, and based on local numbers and regional numbers, there's going to be some differentiation across the state. Um, so I would suspect that, um, uh, you know, we're going to see some variance between, say Fairfield County and Wyndham County for those types of things, but we should be getting that Thursday morning. I do have, I just saw tonight that I have a, uh, superintendents have a phone call with the commissioner at 10:00 AM Thursday morning. So once we have that guidance, and once we actually have a document, I'm hoping for a draft document will be shared with us as well, we're going to send that out to the community. We have, uh, surveys ready to go for both, uh, parents and staff. Um, and then once we have that guidance, we'll, we'll send that, a link out to that guidance as well as links to the surveys. And I'm going to ask folks, before they respond to the surveys, to just read through the guidance so, um, they have an understanding of really what the guidance is going to require. It's going to be far more beneficial for everybody's input and for our planning to be reacting to, um, tangible plans and expectations rather than assumptions. Um, we're right now working against assumptions, and, and that's a dangerous, uh, place to be. So we'll have, we'll have more clarity on Thursday morning, and, and again, those, those surveys will tell everybody, um, that afternoon, that morning, that afternoon. Um, we are working, the, the committee has met, and subcommittees are meeting, um, now to begin working on the different parts of our reentry plan. Again, this work will accelerate now that we have, know what we're getting, getting into, or have a better understanding of what we're going to be expected of us. So we'll be doing that, um, that work is continuing, and as, as that work moves forward, we'll again be providing that information to, um, everybody in town and in the school community. Um, and I think that is it. Um, I just, again, want to wish everybody a happy and safe summer.
Okay. Moving on, committee and lay-in town reports. Ms. Max Cannelly?
Yeah, first, actually, I had a question on the superintendent's report, if I can back up.
Yeah, sorry, any question on the superintendent's report. Ms. Max Cannelly, floor is live.
Um, just one quick question, especially since I noticed we do still have callers on the meeting. Um, I asked, I don't know if this is to Mr. Cummings or to you, Ms. Vitale, but to the point of the guidelines and the surveys and the information, um, I don't know if you could speak to the board's intention of having a July meeting, if this would be as, since that's something that the public might want to be clued into and, and to the point of now working off of more concrete guidelines?
We will be having a July meeting. The date has not been set yet. Um, in part, we, um, have some other business to attend to, so I want you, with the Board of Finance, to want you to try to schedule, uh, multiple things on a multiple nights. And once I schedule, um, check the feature of the Board of Finance, we have, um, some discussions around collective bargaining that we need to meet with them about, um, we will set a date. But for the public's knowledge, stay tuned. There's a lot of work, so you're saying have a good summer. Um, I was going to interrupt saying you, we're not done. Um, it would be nice, but, um, a couple of weeks, we can take a little bit of a breather, but, um, there's a lot of work to be done. Once these guidelines are out, um, you know, we hope it's going to be full steam ahead. Um, the board will be meeting in July, we'll be meeting, you know, as scheduled in August. We'll have to see how it goes, and may need to have another one at the beginning of August as well. Um, so, yeah, put it on, you'll be hearing from me about a date. Any other questions for Mr. Cummings? Ms. Jacobson?
Um, yes, Jen Jacobson. Um, Mr. Cummings, I know that we're, the guidelines are imminent on Thursday likely. Um, I was just wondering, just because the public might be interested to know, is your reopening committee continuing to meet, um, since these guidelines are relatively late, so to speak, um, in coming, or is that kind of on pause right now, or just what the process is in terms of, once you have them, what's happening?
Um, the subcommittees of the committee will be working, so there's, there's about 20 members of the committee at this point of the reentry committee, but we, we know we're going to need to expand some of that work with some of the tasks that are, uh, around us. For example, uh, the program directors are not on as part of the committee, but they are, uh, at working as a subcommittee around instruction and curriculum work, which will take place through, during the month of July. Um, there's a mitigation committee, essentially the kind of group that has to work around social, social distancing, um, and the procedures for students re-entering school. social distancing, um, and the procedures for students reentering school, what that's going to look like every day, you know, any expectations that may come around temperature taking, or masks, or those types of things, and Mr. Papa George and, uh, Ms. Mitchell from the Health Department are leading that group. So, um, there'll be different groups working on these things, and quite honestly, I think we're going to kind of try to divide and conquer, um, the number of tasks that are in front of us, um, before we bring the full committee back together again, because there's just so much that has to get done.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, committee and layman's report, does anybody have any reports? Mrs. Gerber?
Uh, yeah, um, just on Mill Hill, um, we just got an email from the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Quinn, that, um, there will not be a meeting, um, tomorrow, um, but there will be, the next meeting will take place on Wednesday, July 8th, and that will be when they are going to go through the bids and come up with a, uh, updated construction schedule. So I am planning, and they are going to, as of now, uh, hopefully do it in person, um, at Mill Hill, uh, with the committee. I don't know if I will be allowed to go, I'm not quite sure how the numbers are going to be working with that, so, um, I'm assuming they'll be away, and, and, and Mr. Quinn did say anyone who is not comfortable with participating in person, that they would be able to call in, so, um, I, I'm sure that's still a work in progress, um, we've got two weeks, so, um, I'll let everyone know what happens, but either, if I can't attend in person, I will try to, if I'm not, then I will do it remotely, or however they're allowing people to do it who can't be there in person, and I will, uh, report back, hopefully when we meet in July, I'll be able to give some more information about that.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, so I'm sure many of you have heard that there is anticipated to be a special session of the General Assembly, so you, uh, you may be hearing from me as well in December. Um, if there is, once I have an actual piece of legislation, or pieces of legislation that may impact us or affect us, um, I will be sure to send that to you, and, um, of course, let me know if you have any thoughts or questions on that.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson?
I haven't had a Holland Hill up for a while, but I just want to let you know that, uh, you know, the gym floor is being replaced this summer, I have photographic evidence that the gym floor is in, it does look beautiful, uh, it needs to be finished and, uh, has the lines put down, but other than that, everything there is on schedule.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Max Canelli?
Yes, um, just two things from Policy Committee first, I just wanted to put the board on alert, uh, that you will be seeing at that July meeting, um, a policy regarding student insurance for their Chromebooks, and, um, I know you always read our policies carefully, but it would be especially good to look at that one, um, with a special attention to detail for July, because we are planning to roll this out, or we are hoping, as the administration's hope, and the policy committee's hope, that this is ready to go for the start of the school year, so that while nothing, of course, is binding till we vote at it in the second meeting, um, if there are issues, it would be very helpful to get those on the table at this first meeting in July, um, for that first read. So that's one thing. The second thing I just wanted to report out, um, from today's Policy Committee, is that, as you all recall, in this spring, uh, we voted on changes to Policy 3100 for our budget. Um, some of the changes were just organic to the process, but one especially was due to our three-year conversation regarding athletics, and so that one of the changes that we made, or the intention that we signaled, uh, which is then, um, brought to, or notified to the public in the administrative regs, involves a presentation to the board, um, at the start of the school year. And so Mr. Cummings had asked Policy to put together some ideas on what that presentation should look like, and obviously, it, there's, you know, this is going to be round one, it will get better from here going forward, um, but because that conversation had its genesis with us, uh, Mr. Cummings came to us, but at this point, I would, um, ask that it be handed over to Finance, to Mrs. Leeper, if it could, to your agenda, that you can, and I will, um, CC you on the work that we did in policy today, so that, because really, at this point, it is a finance matter. Um, Policy had wanted the presentation to take place, but in terms of the nuances or the, um, details of that report, uh, we certainly know that what it looks like at this first iteration, it will change from there for a variety of reasons that I'll talk about at the start of the school year, um, but just wanted to say it was, I'm, I'm looking forward to that, I think it's something that will be of benefit, uh, to everybody in the community.
Ms. Leeper is giving the thumbs up for the public. Thank you, um, to the Policy Committee for your work on this, and we will send it to the Finance Committee to review and prepare it for presentation to the board in the fall. Any other reports? Seeing none, moving on to open board comment. Anybody have any, Ms. Vitale?
Hi, can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I know we're not done, I'm ready to meet in July, but as we're wrapping up the school year, um, this has been a very interesting year to join the board, and I just, um, I'm all about gratitude, and I wanted to take some time to thank all of you guys, because I have reached out to most of you, um, and everybody has been very welcoming and helpful, and I really appreciate it, and I'm just thankful to be working with you all as a group, so thank you.
Happy to have you, Bonnie.
Anybody else? Mrs. Gerber?
Um, yeah, I, I know, uh, Mr. Cummings had mentioned the graduation, but I just wanted to circle back on that, since we had discussed graduation at a few of our meetings, and, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, this is, I guess, probably the ninth, um, graduation ceremony that I've been to as a board member, and certainly the most memorable, and as a parent of a senior, um, I just cannot thank everyone who is responsible for pulling off what is really a truly incredible, uh, accomplishment, um, for both schools. Uh, I wasn't at Ward, but I saw pictures and I heard about it, and, uh, I know Ludlow is just wonderful, and I have yet to talk to any Ludlow parent, or student, or Ward parent, or student, who didn't just have just amazing things to say about it, so it was a really great way to end a very, very peculiar school year, and, uh, so thank you for that.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just what she said, I mean, I'll just reiterate that, I don't want to belabor the point, but it's just every, all the feedback I've heard has just been, even people who were skeptical that it was going to come off without a hitch, and it was just, uh, the feedback's just been wonderful, and so grateful for, um, so much work and the volunteers that went into it, so just, just echoing Mrs. Gerber's point, so just thank you again.
Anybody else? I just want to, um, I agree about graduation, thank you, everyone involved, it was, um, it was unforgettable, they're going to be talking about that graduation for decades to come in Fairfield, and, um, with your miss, I just want you, Ms. Goddison, thank you for your success this past year, it's been a pleasure working with you, we're going to miss you, you have to come back and visit us when we can, can see you live. Mr. Arnone, you as well, we're, we're going to miss you as well, so come back and visit when you can. Okay, um, so Public comment, again to the public, um, there's a forum on the Board of Education website, if you'd like to leave public comment about any of the agenda items for this meeting, please fill out the form, you can also email publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org. We look forward to hearing from you. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Leeper, all in favor? Motion carries nine zero.